...the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
... Johnson, Tobin?
Here.
Kleiner?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
John Francois?
Here.
Burr?
Here.
Green?
Here.
Massey?
Here.
Mr. Robert?
Here.
We have a quorum. Four more minutes. Tonight, we have four committee council meeting minutes that we have to approve. One is January 2nd, 2019, that was just about to approve. The other ones are January 21st, 2020, February 4th, 2020, and February 18th, 2020.
Motion by Alvin Massey, second five, on the Green. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Response?
Nothing to see.
Force of department heads, Jacob?
Good evening, all. I know that the meeting may not be televised live, but it's recorded, so when people see this partition among the councilmen and the council president, it's at the suggestion of the council president to create partition because of the dilemma would end because of the coronavirus. And it's a great idea. It's very primitive in here, but it will do, it will serve the purpose of isolating the aldermen from each other to provide the social separation. Going through my report very quickly, the water flushing system, water system flushing continues, which is the fire hydrants, you'll see them flushing now, and we are doing the first ward and fourth ward, and we should be done, hopefully, in two to three weeks. We'll finish everything. So again, be very careful when you do laundry, just check the water for clarity, and make sure that really if you see any flushing in your area, just wait for 24 hours before you do any laundry. And sign for me, so like the mayor just reminded me, it's very important to send messages through Excel and on our website as well, City of Midtown website. Yard waste pickup started yesterday, and again, we're going to be covering the city for the first week, couple of weeks, because the load is heavy. It's going to take us some time to cover the city, but we'll get to you, so be patient with us, please. Everything inside container or inside bags, nothing loose. Check out our website about the requirement. Do not push the trees or leaves or branches on the street and expect us to pick them up. Please, just work with us, and you know, just tie them down, wrap them, all the instructions are on our website how to do it. Like the mayor has advised everybody, the spring cleanup unfortunately has been postponed. Probably the mayor might touch on it. The electronic drop-off day of May 23rd, that's something, it's still, we don't know what's going to happen with this virus. Things change from day to day, week to week, so right now it's 5/23rd, yeah, May 23rd, we will keep you posted if there's any change in there. The whole idea is to keep aldermen separated, so whatever we have to do to keep aldermen separated from each other, minimum six feet, we're going to have to continue to do that. And at this point, really, I just want to say a word of thanks to all men in there. You know, everybody has the luxury of sheltering in place and staying home, except for the first responders, the nurses, doctors, people who work in hospitals and ambulances and firefighters and police, and DPW. We still have to keep the water treatment plant running, we still have to have the wastewater treatment plant running, we have to pick up the garbage, we have to pick up yard waste, we have to clean the streets, we have to do the potholes. So really, I take my hat off to all our men and women in DPW. In the administrative offices in here, we ordered laptops so that they can go and work from home. All of them, they opted to stay at the office in here because they thought they would be more productive. That's DPW administration personnel. Again, I take my hat off to each and everyone in DPW, including the ladies in our office in there, because they chose to stay here and do their job and serve the public and probably, you know, just when you leave your house, you get exposed potentially to many, many, many things and viruses. So, you know, again, just from my side and our side in DPW, please stay home and, you know, just take care of yourself and your family. It's tough time, but here we got DPW guys are all over the place and ladies are all over the place, taking care of the job and making sure that we do what we are supposed to do. And for that, I salute each and every one. Another thing, I'll just update it in case of any contractors might be listening. We have Davish Park expansion. The bid opening is May 14th. So if you are interested in Davish Park expansion, the bid opening is in May 14th, you have time to pick up the plans and the addendum, and we can send it to you electronically too in case you can't come in because City Hall is closed, probably the mayor will be talking some more about this. Also, we have a 20-inch high-pressure main and a 12-inch high-pressure main replacement from the water treatment plant through Davish Park expansion and through Monhegan Avenue. That is out for bid, and the bid opening for that is April 30th, April 30th, for the 20-inch and 12-inch water main. Also, we opened bids on March 27th for the DRI of downtown parking lot and the green infrastructure implementation, and the bids are being evaluated right now with the engineer, Lehman and Getz, and they will get back to us, and then we will meet with the mayor and the contractors and go from there, whether we'll explore whether we have to rebuild the project or continue as it is. The walkway, that's the mayor's project, the walkway between East Main and Orchard. We had a construction, pre-construction meeting, and we're hoping that the construction mobilization will start next week. And with that, I will conclude my remarks. If you have any questions for me?
Alvin Massey? Jacob, am I correct that because the holiday happens to be Friday, that garbage pickup is a regular schedule? Or am I off on that?
Because, yeah, garbage is regular schedule. It's no Friday, I guess we're off Friday.
We're off Friday.
So we're off Friday, so we'll pick up recyclable on Saturday, yes.
But the garbage pickup is...
Is still the same.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, yes, the garbage is still the same. Recyclables, we'll pick them up on Saturday. No, I did not realize we're off on Friday, to be honest with you. I'm Christian Orthodox, I'm one week behind you guys.
Well, you can come in. Anyone else?
I have one question.
Alvin Johnson?
The Davish Park expansion, is that still looking at the fall of '21 or are we looking at spring of '22?
They are looking, we are looking to start this project obviously this year, and we'll go into next year.
Alvin Kleiner?
Yeah, quickly, the reservoir trails, do you know where we are on that or?
No, I don't, you got to talk to the mayor.
Okay, thank you. Jacob, John?
Just as some of you probably do know, the presidential primary was discontinued, we will not have it, and that was scheduled for April 28th, and also the early voting is canceled for that too, the presidential primary. It's now going to be changed to June 23rd, and if you receive this card in the mail, it is wrong because it was sent out after they had canceled it. So, like I did, I received this too, and I talked to the board of elections today, they're going to be sending out new cards with the corrected dates on them. But the presidential primary now will be changed to June 23rd, and the early voting for that will be June 13 through June 21st. That's all that happened.
Any questions for John? John, mayor?
Yes. Good evening. Let me open with what Jacob brought up about the thanking all the city employees, our emergency responders, our doctors, nurses, EMTs, our sanitation workers. They really are doing a tremendous job. As most of you know, or should know, is the, we are doing some work from home from City Hall with some employees. We're trying to reduce the density at City Hall and within the building, but these other fellows, and in some cases ladies also, are out in the street every day with the weather, dealing with some of the issues that, to be honest with you, I wouldn't want to deal with. That's one of the reasons why we delayed spring cleanup. We are not canceling it. We have postponed it indefinitely until we get a better idea of how this coronavirus thing is going to work out. We will give a 30-day notice before we implement a new schedule. So it could be July, it could be August, whenever it is, we'll know, for your ward, you will know 30 days in advance, so you can make preparations to do that. In regards to other city services and personnel, we do have these four city employees that have tested positive, and we have a few more out being tested. So it is a serious problem, and you know, our thoughts and prayers go to all the, to them and their families as they suffer through this, and the city is standing behind them with offering the family medical leave, and that's just something we can do as a community. But they, once they're better, they'll come back to work too. And that's the amazing part of this whole thing, is the, and some of them have really wanted to come back to work earlier, but we required the medical clearance for them to come back for obvious reasons, and for only their benefit, but for the benefit of the coworkers. So for a small city like us to have four-plus people out, I think that's significant. The actions that we've taken, I mentioned some of them at the last meeting, I might be repeating them, but it's all relevant. Parks are open, but the equipment in the playgrounds is closed, swings, the slide, the playground equipment, the basketball hoops have been removed in all parks. And we do that for a reason, an obvious reason, but in doing so, we try to encourage as much activity still with people out there walking, walking through the parks. And we have had a couple calls about tennis, and why are we allowing tennis courts to remain open? And Chris is monitoring them on a daily basis along with her staff. Tennis is usually a one-on-one game, I guess apparently, there are times you might have two-on-two. People are advised to have the social distancing, play the game the way they need to, but if we find it to be an abuse, and I'm not writing up there today, Chris is monitoring it, Chris Breaker Hall for our superintendent of parks, and at some point if she feels that we should close them, then we will. But apparently right now at this point, she doesn't feel the need to do so because she doesn't believe they're being, the facility is being violated. In the area of the coronavirus itself and the state action and local action, as you know, the governor has extended the New York PA's enforcement until the April 29th. He issued on April 1st a additional task force recommendation, not recommendation, he formed a task force in order to address abuses. So they have this task forces going out with state police, going to different businesses that they believe might not be allowed to be open. A business that would like to stay open has to file a, unless they're on the essential business list, they need to file with the state a request to have their property deemed essential, and if they are not, there's substantial fines. The biggest local issue with this is, and some of us have been engaged in this on Facebook and on the phone calls that we have with the county and the state of New York every day, is Kerius Joel and Palm Town, Palm Tree. And I know that there are a lot of people beaten up by the governor for not doing something or containing like they did in New Rochelle, the Kerius Joel. So I think what people have a misunderstanding about what containment and what quarantine are. What happened in New Rochelle was at the beginning of the crisis, and they created a containment zone. That did not mean that people could not go in or go out of Kerius Joel. It was sending additional resources, trying to contain the disease in Kerius, I mean, in New Rochelle. And they sent the National Guard, the National Guard did not do law enforcement, the National Guard did other duties, cleaning property, cleaning public property, and assisting New Rochelle and trying to keep the spread from going out of New Rochelle into throughout the rest of the state. Obviously, it didn't work. And it worked for New Rochelle because New Rochelle people started doing social distancing, and they started doing other things that were recommended by the, by Dr. Fauci in the federal government. But the word containment zone has been thrown around about Kerius Joel quite frequently, and in the governor's name it's been thrown out, now why isn't he doing something about it? Well, he did. He issued an executive order about three weeks ago. The responsibility for enforcing the state law or the state executive order lies with the local communities. So if Middletown is having a lot of abuse with this executive order, if people are gathering in the parks, if people are ignoring it at religious ceremonies, religious houses of worship, then it's up to Middletown to police Middletown, just like in the situation with Kerius Joel and Palm Tree, it's up to the state police, who are the primary response, and the sheriff's office, who are also a county-wide police force, and they have mutual aid that is accessible to them in the case of if something happens where they need additional police resources, they would call upon all communities in Orange County to send whatever they can to assist them. From what I'm told, it's getting better, but you do have an occasional large event like a funeral or a wedding. My encouragement to the county and to the, on the county conference calls is that there needs to be a police presence in Kerius Joel and Palm because we are potentially all affected. When they get infected, they're taking up room in our hospitals, and it's a concern. So it should concern us here in Middletown just as much as it concerns the people in Monroe, the adjacent town. It's not all the people in Kerius Joel that are doing this. There are, you know, there are a village or a town of 30,000-plus people, but there are abuses, and I've encouraged that both a state police and a sheriff's presence, and I've been doing that for a couple of weeks. On April 1st, we even offered to send Middletown police if need be as part of a county-wide mutual aid force. On April 1st, the governor then reissued the order with creating this task force and doubling the fines. So now you could be fined for abusing the executive order of public gatherings, you could be fined up to $1,000, and I think there could also be criminal penalties imposed on you. But the governor is not going to come down from Albany on a horse and arrest people. It's up to local government, and we've been encouraging county government and county sheriffs, state police to do what they were told to do through this executive order. And hopefully, we're going to see some action. I know several supervisors and mayors throughout the county, I did hear from them after we had some quite, a discussion on some of the calls, and they're supportive of the idea. They want, and we want, and I think most people want, a police presence in Kerius Joel that will reduce the public gatherings and put an end to the large gatherings, whether they're a house of worship or not. Houses of worship are not closed, they're just not allowed to have large gatherings. So you can go to St. Joseph's into the chapel and pray if you want, you need to practice social distancing. You can go to any church or mosque or synagogue in the area and do the same if they have their doors open. It's not illegal to have their doors open. It is illegal though to have these large weddings or large funerals and large events. And that's where the police need to crack down, and they need to crack down not on a call basis, they need to crack down with a presence basis, so they're not responding to an incident, rather they're trying to prevent the incident, because that gathering is going to cause problems for all of us here in Orange County. So the, yes.
When you say large at this point, is that more than 10 or more than 100, or what is large?
Well, there are, the guidelines are 10, but the social distancing is the biggest part, the six-feet social distancing. So I, you know, in the state of Florida, in Tampa, there was a minister down there that was ignoring the rules, they arrested him because he had thousands of people at his, at his events. And, you know, I know it's tough to arrest someone who is a religious leader in the community, but if they're going to jeopardize all of our lives, then we need to take the correct action. So we, as a county, I think are all unified now, I think the state police have had an increased presence. I don't know what role the sheriff's office is playing down there right now, but as I said, if necessary, there is help with the rest of us. So I just want the people of Middletown to understand, we are all involved in this, whether we're close to Kerius Joel or not close to Kerius Joel, and I'm not criticizing a whole community, because we've had pockets at times of people themselves here in the city where the police have broken it up. And we give a warning. We take names. If we catch you a second time, then you're going to get a fine. And if you get caught a third time, you're probably going to be arrested. And that's the message they need to send down there, and that's for the protection of all of us. So the other things that the, we've been working on, and the governor's executive orders, he issues one or amends them almost on a daily basis, and I'm sure many of you and many of the public are watching him on television or on his website, ny.gov. There are a lot of economic development plans that business owners need to start getting involved in, not only on the federal level, but on the state level and even the county level. The county executive, Maria Bruni's been working with her department, the economic development department here in the city, putting the programs together, what's available, putting them online, on Facebook, on social media, on websites, and just letting people know what programs are available out there for their businesses, for the PPP program about payroll borrowings, that's a federal program. The IDA program that the county executive has been talking about is going to be a local program for small businesses. There could be working capital available to businesses or borrowing against your last three months payroll to cover future expenses. Even the homeowners, there are benefits about contacting their bank and getting their mortgages deferred, and even tenants' rights issues that are out there. So the GoToArt Economic Development page, Maria is, and Caitlin and Trace, not Tracy, Patty Racine and Jean are doing a good job putting this all together for us, and if you have any questions, you can call them, they will contact Empire State Development and try to get some answers for you. We, there's a guide for business that has been posted now for probably, I think it was April 2nd, it was updated the last time, it will continue to be updated. We did receive a grant through our community development program of $292,000, but we're waiting for confirmation on how that money can be spent. We know it's Corona-related to community development programs, but we need more specific guidelines before we can see what we're going to do with that money locally. We've also received notification, and you might have read about it in the paper within the last few days, through Congressman Maloney's office, of a three-plus million-dollar grant, transportation, Corona-related. And again, the guidelines are not out how you can spend that money. We're hoping that it's in the area of infrastructure because it's transportation money, not operational money, because we don't operate a public transit system. So we're assuming that since they granted us this transportation money, it can be used another way. So Jacob is reviewing the guidelines from that, that were provided through our economic development department. I spoke with Ernest of Congressman Maloney's office today. They are also getting more information as it comes, you know, comes forward through the federal government. So we're, we do know one thing, the money cannot be spent on city operational stuff. These are one-shot grants that will have a significant impact on us. Why do we need help? Our projections, based on sales tax laws, uncollected taxes, and so on, but primarily the main driver is sales tax, is we're projecting a $5.1 million shortfall for 2020. Significant money. One of the reasons why we have that big rainy day fund called Fund Balance in our budget. So we will not be laying off people as a result of the coronavirus. We're going to maintain services, we're going to continue to move projects ahead, we're going to tap into as many resources as we can on the federal, state, and county level, and we are not laying anyone off. I think it would be a shame if we, after having all these dedicated employees working through this, then to say, hey, we're short a few dollars, we're going to lay you off now for the, for all your hard work and for all your courage, and that's our gratitude. So we're not doing that. So that's a strong message to our workforce, that although we have to go into our reserves, we will get through this and we will move ahead. So, and that's one of our mottos now that we're trying to think of, we're, through economic development and with our business community, is we want to start thinking about tomorrow. We know that this is a horrible thing we're all going through, especially those families that are directly impacted, but we know that there's also a tomorrow, and we're planning for that tomorrow because we need to rebound from this as quickly as possible, and we will. In order to do that, a lot of these programs that I just mentioned and referenced with, through Maria's office, are driven by census data. And we are in a position right now where we have only had 34% of our properties respond to the census. Understandable, bad timing. I know an old friend of mine from St. Joseph's days, might put up a post on Facebook, and he said, "furthest thing from my mind right now." And I said, Bob, I said, "this is important stuff. I understand, you know, it should be, maybe could be the furthest thing from your mind, but we need to start thinking about tomorrow, we need to start thinking about how these resources are going to come back into Middletown. If we don't count everybody, we are going to lose money in our future budgets. Then we will be faced with the long-term prospects of possible reduction of services, reduction of staff, and so on." Now, this won't come out, of course, until like 2022 around there, when the final numbers are out, but our sales tax agreement is coming up. Our sales tax agreement with Orange County is based solely upon the allocation of sales tax money between the three cities based on population gathered from the census. So we don't respond to the census, we drop our population, although we have more people living here, we lose our resources, we lose access to that sales tax money, increase, potential decrease in our revenue, and we're shot for 10 years, because we don't get another bite at this for another 10 years. So we're, we have these census tracts that were identified, we monitor it daily, we're getting the lowest response through the mailing. When everything clears up, there will be census folks going door-to-door, they're called enumerators, and they will be assisting people or trying to encourage people to sign up for the census. I think a lot of the work has to be done by you folks right here, contacting your constituents. We're doing mailings, we're going to be, we met with the school district today, or yesterday, I mean, Kevin Witt, and we're about at the site of the food drop-off, we will be handing out the brochures, basically, asking people to call. You don't have to do it by mail, you can call, do it on, they, all different languages, our brochure is in three languages, English, Spanish, Chinese. So we're doing everything we can to get counted, and it's so important for everyone to participate. Make sure you count the babies in your house, make sure you count everyone in your house that was there on April 1st. That's whoever's living with you on April 1st is the criteria for the census. So we need Middletown, let's get counted, let's get our fair share of federal and state money, and let's do the responsible thing. Now, ending on a nice positive note, up on the screen, I hope, there it is. This is a video, which I'm sure all of you have seen. You know, there's a lot of things we can do in a community, and we're doing a lot of things. We're doing some home delivery, our police are delivering groceries to some seniors or disabled folks who are unable to get to the grocery store. We have our senior department calling their logs of seniors who are in the, in their system, checking on them, talking to them, just giving them some company. Next week, we'll be calling them about the census. Our rec department is bagging, doing bags of essentials, milk, bread, some toilet paper at times, when we're able to get those things. We're trying to work with Cornell. We're trying to work with Cornell Cooperative through Dr. Johnson to have like a little bit of a food bank where we can do some distribution. On an honor system, of course, to people who really need it. It's not to supplement people, it's to people, people with need. They are being delivered door-to-door. In some cases, we're picking up prescriptions for seniors. The police department has really stepped up. But they also stepped up in other ways besides providing services. They stepped up in a way where a lot of kids are missing birthday parties. And it's emotional for them. And I guess Lieutenant Tholman, being a father himself, he recognized it and came up with a plan that is really, not only a good plan, but has such a positive impact in the community that, and it started for kids. Now, we had a 90-year-old the other day. His family called, and they wanted it. So, can you roll that video finally? As you can see, the fire department joined in. It's been a huge success. And we've only had one negative, well, not really a negative comment, but just one person who said they do not want this to happen to them. And that was Alderman Joe Massey, whose birthday is Sunday. He turns 75. So, I'm not going to sing "Happy Birthday" to him right now, but he has made a specific request that we not do that for him. And we won't. But, the idea is, a lot more people in the community are really getting excited about this. And our rec department's coming up with other ideas. The, scared me now, that coughing. I think I talk too much, right?
No comment.
Like trucking your, sending messages, trucking your driveway, and just things that keep people active, that keep kids active, and encourage people to, that tomorrow's coming and tomorrow's going to be a better day. So, thank you all. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Question from the mayor.
Chair.
Mr. McConner. And just quickly, the one resolution on the obtained security system.
Yes. Yes, we're, you know, we have a door system here at City Hall that is really somewhat, a little bit backwards. For example, the side doors you can't lock with people in the building, because there's no fire door on that side. So, it's a violation of the fire code. Some of the doors don't close well. But, that's really not what motivated it all. What motivated is the COVID and the need at times to seal the building, to keep it shut, and to allow employee access. So, we're going through the same system that we have at the firehouse with the FOBs. So, every city employee will have a, on their keychain, will have, scan it, and just get into the doors. The doors, we'll be able to program them for different board members, so that they can get in maybe the night of their board meeting only, without having someone to be here. But, it's a pretty, it's a good program. But also, at the same time, is we are examining now something that started in 9/11, and then when we had the court shooting, was discussed again. And that is limiting the access at the city hall with one door for the public. Right now, into our building, you have three doors that the public can come in and out of. And the times like this, you understand what the need to restrict access to the building. And actually, you have two other doors in the lobby area. So, we're examining options. Of course, it has to be ADA accessible. My plan is to look at the lobby of, between the court and the police station as the new entrance, both front and rear, and into the, into that area by the court. So, you then can go into the court, go through the court's security, or then you can come into City Hall through that side door between the two. That's my plan. We're looking at it, we're examining it. The first step was is to install this equipment. We're hoping it's going to be reimbursable under the, one of the grant programs, because it is a reaction to the Corona. You can't get an answer on what's fundable or not yet, but we decided to go ahead to do it under the emergency order, because right now, it's somewhat unbearable. You want people to touch doors as least as possible. You have people fidgeting with doors. You have grabbing on the bars. You can't lock the front door. And you've all experienced it, so you know. So, we went with the same company that did the firehouse. So, we'll have comparable equipment. And we also plan doing other city buildings. The rec center and, I think the water treatment plant, I think already has it, and water sewer, Jake, did they both have it?
Water has it.
Water has it, do the sewer plant. So, that also acts as, you know, you know who's in the building, because you know who went into the building at least. And so, it's a security measure, and both short-term for the coronavirus and then long-term for, a long-term security.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Johnson.
With respect to the census, what's the deadline to respond to the census? Is it the end of the year?
Well, I think it's been extended now to August for the first response. The, usually, April 1st, or right around now, would have been the time people had to respond with their mail. If you misplaced your mail, by the way, and you don't have your registration number, you can still do it. Or you have, the best thing to do, if you're not, you know, so skilled on a computer, is to call the number, and they'll walk you through it. It's very simple. Online, it takes maybe five to eight minutes. But on the phone calls, probably even, you know, maybe more or maybe less, but it's not long either way. We're providing all those phone numbers. They were up on the screen. And we'll be providing them in the parks. We're doing them in our water building. That's coming out May 1st. There'll be a flyer in there also. But, you know, I talk about it a lot because it's so important.
And as far as the enumerators, they may or may not be able to go door-to-door with COVID. But if there were those people, are they volunteers or are they paid by the state?
No, they're paid by the state. We legally cannot help someone fill out the census. And we as a city. The enumerators are paid by the Census Bureau. The information's protected. There are no citizenship questions on it. One thing we really need to do is to have, because some of those census tracts have large Latino populations. We're doing outreach with that community, trying to get people to respond to the census. As you know, there was a big scare that President Trump started with the citizenship question, and we're going, you fill out the census, and we're going to deport you, and all those fears. Supreme Court or some court knocked that down and said they cannot include that on the census. The information that you put into the census cannot be accessed, I think, for 72 years. So, you have, it might be more than 72 years. It might be 92 years, for all I know. But I know it's a long, long time, 70-plus years. So, there's no fear of filling out the census form. No fear that the government's going to come in and get your information. And whether you're undocumented or whether you're just some person who doesn't want to provide the government with any more information, once you fill out that form or call in your information, that's it, nobody sees it again.
Thank you. Anyone else? Would you bear?
Thank you.
Martha Waldman, hold the mask. First, I'd like to start out with something with the civil service. The exam, the firemen's exam, which we had over 100 people who signed up already, which was scheduled for April 28th, has been postponed. The state hasn't come up with a new date. If you just follow along on our website, we will put it up there as soon as we find out. You're going to get a letter anyway. It's an admission notice, and you'll get that a week ahead of time. So, you'll know when the new date is. Same is going for the ones, we have three exams scheduled for May, the middle of May. I'm assuming that they too will be postponed. However, at this particular date, they haven't been. But the important one right now, not that one test is more important than the other, but like I say, I said April 28th, it's April 25th. There are over 100 people who signed up for the firemen's exam. That has been postponed. Just want to put a shout-out to, and I know probably everybody, all my colleagues are going to say basically the same thing, and I just happened to be the first one. Not only to our staff, you know, you need your garbage picked up, you need things done, and we have the staff that's doing it. They deserve a lot of credit. Along with, City Hall is staffed. Each one of our departments is open. It's not open to the public, but these people are still here working. Of course, the police, the fire, the AMS, the AMTs, the first responders, we've got to be very thankful for them. And today, when I was driving to the grocery store, I had to stop and get some gas. And I thought, you know what? The gas station's open, there's an attendant there. That person is doing something for us. When I went to the grocery store, I had my mask. And if we keep the social distancing, I think we'll get through this. But I thought too, all the people at the register and the ones that are stocking the shelves, we owe them a debt of gratitude. The nurses, the doctors, it's unbelievable. We're pretty lucky that people are pulling together. And I think if we continue the social distance, and we will get through this sooner than later. But please, don't think that when it levels off, that, well, okay, now we can get back out there. Remember, if you wear the mask, you're actually taking care of other people. And that's the important thing. You certainly don't want to get it, and you certainly don't want to be a carrier and get attention else. And I know my colleagues are probably going to speak on this too, so I'll pretty much end it, except for the mayor brought up my birthday. And I know that a couple of people had contacted the police department. And I think one of the reasons I was against it, if you know me and my past, anytime a bunch of police cars pull in front of my house, it makes me a little nervous. But Police Department, Fire Department, I do thank you guys for thinking of it, but thank you anyway, and give it to someone else. Thanks.
Alderman Tholman.
Yeah, sorry to repeat it, because it can't be repeated enough. Thank you to our first responders, all of our essential workers. They're literally risking their lives out there. Let's do our part, like Alderman Massey said, to keep that curve down, so they don't have to be out there more than they need to. And my thoughts and prayers going out to any of the families or people being affected by the coronavirus. Thank you.
Alderman Green.
Thank you. Yeah, I will echo, of course, to our first responders, police, fire, EMS, AMTs, doctors, nurses, custodians, you know, store clerks, thank you. You guys are out there doing, you know, work on the front lines. Our DPWs do a phenomenal job, city workers. You know, you can't thank everyone enough. So, for that, of course, we'll say once more, thank you. You know, this is one of those things, one of those times where unfortunately, thinking that it's not, you know, going to happen to me is not a safe thing to do. You know, basically, you just have to be out there smart. If you need to go out, make sure it's essential only. Wear a mask. You know, don't go out, don't go into your large groups. You know, just because the parks are closed in terms of the playground equipment, doesn't mean you take your kids out and have groups of them gather in a picnic outside the gate. So, unfortunately, you know, we do see that in some communities, and really, we need to flatten the curve. I do want to say one thing, because I did see something on Facebook this morning that kind of made me think at first. It'll be brief, but it was a post that showed a guy driving his car with gloves and a mask on. And it said, "If you're doing this, just stop it. What's the point? You're alone in your car." And, you know, for a minute, I thought, you know, I thought that the other day, why the heck would I wear gloves or a mask when I'm driving myself in my car? And it took me two seconds to realize that, well, maybe this guy was a doctor who got off of a 12-hour shift and needed to get some food at a drive-through. And maybe he knew that, you know, if he had that mask on or those gloves on, there's a reason that he wouldn't infect someone or potentially pass it along. So, there are reasons for people doing the right thing. And it's not one of those times where, you know, you need to do the cool thing and be out without gloves, without a mask. In fact, tonight, I mentally left the house with a mask just for that very reason, but I do have my sanitizer with me at all times. So, let's just keep it up. With the police and fire department going birthdays, I think it's a wonderful thing. You see the smile on the kids' faces. That video alone was just phenomenal. I did see, it wasn't in this community, thankfully, but someone did say it's a waste of resources. And I said, "A waste of resources? Not at all." This is what's keeping people going, what's bringing up hope. So, keep up the great work, police, fire, everyone who's doing that. And, you know, we'll all get through this together. Good night, thanks.
Alderman Johnson.
Thank you. I concur with the wisdom of my colleagues with respect to our appreciation. I want to talk about gloves for a second. I want to talk about driving in your car with gloves. I was in the supermarket, and a lady in front of me was kind of stressed. And I said, you know, "Take your time, whatever." She had gloves on. She finished buying her purchases. She took her left-hand glove off. She went to do the credit card. She took the credit card. She actually put it in her mouth for a second. She did this. And then she looked at me and she said, "So, I screwed that up, right?" I said, "Yeah, you screwed that up." So, there's a sequence here. If you went to the supermarket and you touched the basket and you thought it might be contaminated, in my opinion, as a veterinarian, and as somebody who knows a little bit about viruses, you should not be wearing those gloves in your car. Because now, you just took that contaminated glove. You did not wash it, because you have gloves on. You didn't wash it, because it's not your hand. You got back into your vehicle, you turned your steering wheel, you touched the handle of your car to get in. So, I'm not sure, unless you put on a second pair of gloves, you should be driving around with gloves on. And I was really, of all the things that upset us, and we all have our points. When I went into the supermarket the other night at about 8:00 on Sunday, the parking lot was littered with gloves. That is tantamount to medical waste. That is tantamount to leaving a heroin needle in the parking lot. And you did that, and you left, and you want some 19-year-old kid who's collecting baskets to go and be told, "You need to go pick up all those gloves." Now, I hate to say, the good news is the gloves inside out. It's probably not infectious. But the point is, what is wrong with people that you would do that? Enough said. On a more mundane note, the zombie house thing is moving forward. I've been told by the administration we don't really have to ever go back to committee. Mr. Smith has kind of toned it up for our community. The representative is willing to do a distant virtual presentation if needed. And as far as I understand, we're going to have to share that with the agenda at the next meeting. The mayor mentioned the cleaning program. Just for people that don't know about it, it's been with Cornell for a long time. What they do is they collect produce. It could be stuff that somebody brought to a foreign market in the city and had it left over. Or it could be a harvest if they don't have enough people to harvest all the crop. So, if you had three acres of strawberries New York may be able to get to, Cornell would send volunteers to harvest them and then redistribute them. The mayor came up with the idea, maybe if there's some product and we could kind of redistribute through the city. And they did the calls and touched with our representative of the program. And lastly, I do want to touch on the Carrie Stroll issue. Once again, I'm going to put a little bit of rank on my day job. I'm in the credit vent area in the state of New York, and I'm trained in somewhat infectious disease. And if there was a horse farm and a portable disease came onto that farm, that farm would be quarantined. No horses in, no horses out. If I was called to treat that horse, I would have a certain amount of clothing. I would have to put it on, step across the line, do the work, I would have to put it on, step across the line, do the work, say this is the contamination line, this is the clean line. I have to take everything off that's on the contamination line and beg it to go onto the clean side. So when you have a community that's a hot pocket of disease, I do not see it as socioeconomic, I don't see it as discriminatory. I see it as population medicine. And you need to contain that infection in that population, regardless of who that population tends to be. And I applaud all the efforts of those who want to monitor that population moving around our community. Thank you.
Alderman Kiner.
Thank you. Coincidentally, this is April 7th, this is World Health Day. And this year, they were, it's by coincidence featuring nurses and midwives. And gee, if you have a midwife, this would be a good year to have one and have a birth at home. But again, you can't thank people enough who are out there putting their lives on the line and everyone from, from city employees to grocery store workers, but particularly in the war zone, in the hospitals and fighting this. And people haven't paid attention. We had 23 deaths in Orange County yesterday. And people say that like, well, you know, we're trying to keep the number down, but they haven't talked about what kind of deaths those were. Some people have. But the suffering and what you read about is just unbelievable. So we can't possibly thank those people enough. But what we could do, we have a wartime president. Commander in chief, he says he's a wartime president. Yet he says it's up to the states to fight this war. Can you imagine in World War II? The governors, you know, if you're nice enough to me and kiss my whatever, maybe I'll send you some helmets and guns and we'll see who fights this war. The United States of America. This is a national problem and this is a hell of a way to go to war. We're starting to get it right and hopefully the numbers will start to level out and come down. And it will run its course, but we know from 1918, we know what a pandemic could do. We know one of the major problems in 1918 was where to pile all the bodies because people were dying so fast. That's a lesson we should have learned. We also, OC in Wisconsin, and I have to go there, they're holding an election today. Even though the governor did an executive order to postpone it and then at least did an executive order trying to extend absentee ballots. It got overturned by the Wisconsin Supreme Court. And then the absentee ballot extension got overturned by the United States Supreme Court, five to four. Surprise, surprise, if your favorite candidate was not on the ballot three years ago. These are the consequences you're getting. So it's just, it's unbelievable you can make people do that. And right now Senator Metzger has introduced a vote-by-mail bill. I don't have the Senate bill number, but you can find it online. And I would hope everyone would support it. And if you send any comments to the governor. And again, the governor has really stepped up and done a hell of a job in New York State. So, but I would urge everyone to support that bill. It's really important. We don't know what will be on the September election, but certainly for June, you know, to have to have an excuse on your absentee ballot that you'll be out of the county when you have a stay-at-home order? It's, it's mind-boggling. While people are stuck at home and people have been in the recommended book list for people, you know, things to read while you're at home, well, one of them should be the United States Constitution. We all take an oath to defend it and preserve it. And I know one person who took an oath to defend it who never read it, obvious. But I certainly, I certainly urge people to read Article 2. That's the one he found out about this year. It does not let him do anything he wants. But look at Article 2 and see if you can find anything about signing statements. In the part where it says, "Part of your duties are to see that the laws be faithfully executed." I don't see anything about signing statements. I don't see anything about the power to levy tariffs either. If you can find it, let me know. But I can't find it there. You know, I was going to mention about the trash because I saw the same thing and the gloves and I've seen pictures of, you know, hillsides and banks and it's just covered with gloves. And it's like picking up after your dog. I mean, pick up after your own trash and try and keep everyone safe. It's not just for you. And who would think that what I'd be wishing people is a safe Easter and a safe Passover? Please stay at home, observe it the best you can, and stay safe. Thank you.
Alderman Johnson.
Good evening. First, I'd like to start by saying my condolences to everyone that loves, that love one in this horrible virus. Please, everyone, take care of yourself. Our first responders, I don't know what else to say. You know, this is, this is, my hat goes out to all our first responders. I mean, this was an important job from the beginning. But with this chaos that's going on, I mean, this is, these people have been very powerful. You know, the doctors, the lawyers, nurses, policemen, you know, I take my hat out to them. And the other day, when the virus first started, they were saying, there was a rumor going around saying, well, this virus is not killing African-Americans. People, don't be silly, don't be stupid, take care of yourself. The virus, it doesn't matter if you're rich or poor, whatever the kids might be. Don't believe in that. The data is not in yet, but the statistics are basically saying 60% of people that's dying is actually African-American. So take care of yourself, take care of your family, don't believe what you hear. Everybody's dying from that, regardless of color or whatever you have. We all die from that. This is very serious. Happy birthday.
Alderman Burks.
Yeah, I'd also like to thank the first responders, DPW, and all the people involved. And Joe, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Thanks for our safety shields, most appreciated. And that'll be all. Thank you.
New business.
We have a resolution, responsible Alderman Massey, to approve the 2019 service aware program list for the city of Milliken Fire Department and authorize the city clerk to sign the approval.
Mr. President, Massey, second, Alderman Green, discussion.
Tovan.
Aye.
Kiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
John Frazwa.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President President.
Resolution passes. Resolution, responsible Alderman Tolan, to approve a one-year agreement for eminent service from the Mobile Life Support Service.
Mr. President, Massey, second, Alderman Kiner, any discussion?
Tovan.
Aye.
Kiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
John Frazwa.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President President.
Resolution passes. Resolution, responsible Alderman Johnson, to approve the sale of 15 Houston Avenue Extension, City Tax Map Section 43, Block 7, Lot 13. Lot 13, and authorize the mayor to sign all documents of the sale.
Thank you, lot. Well, the resolution, responsible Alderman Johnson, second, five, Alderman Kiner, any discussion?
Tovan.
Aye.
Kiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
John Frazwa.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President President.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution, responsible Alderman Johnson, to approve the sale of 15 Houston Avenue Extension, City Tax Map Section 43, Block 7, Lot 13. Lot 13, and authorize the mayor to sign all documents of the sale.
Thank you, lot. Well, the resolution, responsible Alderman Johnson, second, five, Alderman Kiner, any discussion?
Tovan.
Aye.
Kiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
John Frazwa.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President President.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution, responsible Alderman Massey, to approve an emergency purchase for a security system for City Hall in the amount of $47,500.
Mr. President, Massey, second, Alderman Kiner, any discussion?
Tovan.
Aye.
Kiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
John Frazwa.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President President.
Resolution passes. That is all for new business.
Audit.
Mr. President, I move the accounts to be audited. The claims be adjusted and the city treasurer will authorize tuition warrants for their payment.
Mr. President, Massey, second, five, Alderman Johnson.
Tovan.
Aye.
Kiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
John Frazwa.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President President.